All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a court of present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to leave the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pleasure of ladies.
Let's pray. Good Lord, Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for the blessings of the day, Father. We just thank you for all that you've done, Father. Continue to do and promise to do, Father. We thank you for this city, Lord, just the ability to carry forth in the business you've given us, Father. We pray for wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and discernment, Father, in every decision that's made, let it be done in a way that pleases you according to your will. First and foremost, we thank you for the free offering of forgiveness that you've given us, Lord. Let us praise you and glorify you always, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on May 16.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve the minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of May 12 through the 18.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Reed, Congress.
John Gray.
John Gray.
John Gray, come up.
for training South Vietnamese forces on January 12, 1962. United States Army pilots lifted 1,000 South Vietnamese servicemembers over Joe Molyneux under brush to capture a national liberation front stronghold near Saigon. Operation Chopper marked America's first combat mission against the Vietcong and the beginning of one of our longest and most challenging wars. Whereas though many, whereas though more than a decade of conflict had tested the fabric of our nation, the service of our men and women in uniforms stood true. In 1973, a ceasefire agreement was entered and the troops, American troops, were lifted off of Vietnam. Over 58,000 members of the U.S. Armed Forces lost their lives in Vietnam and thousands returned home beaten from bearing sharpener and scars. Stiff more than were burdened by the invisible wounds of post-traumatic stress or aging orange or as memories that would never fade. A lasting memorial was established in Washington, DC where the names of those who bore conflict's greatest cost are etched into two faces of black granite. A replica of the Vietnam Memorial Moving Wall travels across the great nation to honor the historical legacy and dedication of these brave men and women. The Gadsden-Edgewall Patriots Association coordinated a massive local initiative and secured a tourist stop for the Moving Wall in Gadsden, Alabama on May 11 through May 15, 2017. Many individuals, businesses, and governmental entities gave their support to make this dream a reality. Therefore, I, Sean Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 24, 2017, as a day of appreciation to the Gadsden-Edgewall Patriots Association and all those who assisted in bringing the Vietnam Memorial Moving Wall to the City of Gadsden.
Oh, yeah, I'll take an opportunity to say something. Would the members of the Patriots Association please stand? And also, do we have any Vietnam veterans in here? Please stand. That's the people that need the applause. Real briefly, when the traveling wall is requested, they tell you it takes 18 to 24 months to put this on. Our Chairman was sitting in the office when a phone call was made in the second week of February and we were told there was a cancellation, May 11 through 15, that we wanted. He kind of looked at me like, "What are you trying to do now, dummy?" But he said, "Go for it." We did. It took, you've heard the saying, "A village, it took more than a village." The City of Gadsden and Edgewall County needs to hold their head proud. We had a perfect location that over 19 states were here to see it. I had a veteran I met when I first went to Vietnam, traveled from San Antonio, Texas up Sunday to see the wall and say, "Oh." The Gadsden Chamber of Commerce, Edgewall Tourism Board, Mike Eccles, Parks and Rec, Shane, the Mayor, all our municipalities, Sheriff's Department, we had over 5,000 volunteer hours. This was an event when, at most times in our country right now, when there's an event with patriotism for our servicemen, there's some type of problem. Over 70,000 people that we know of came through and there was more than that because the clicker kept disappearing. So we don't know. On the day it rained, a lady made a statement, which I think is really true, because we had two days we thought it was going to be raining out and we weren't. She said it really, really wasn't raining. It was the tears of the 3,000 Vietnam veterans in Edgewall County and the tears of the names of those 58,000 on that wall to tell Gadsden-Edgewall County, "Thank you for telling me welcome home. A job well done."
I have Rick here to always do all the talking, but I did want to express our appreciation to the Council and the Mayor for the City of Gadsden for a job well done. It was an honor for us to bring the wall to Edgewall County. It's a nice extra honor to be recognized for this. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Do want to again extend a thank you to the Edgewall Patriots Association and all of those responsible for making that event happen. We're really proud of our, proud of our city and proud of the work that you guys put in. Great, great job. Thank you so much. We have no unfinished business today, so item number nine is a resolution awarding bid number 3339 for copier lease, supplies, and service. The purchasing department has recommended awarding the bid to Elite Business Systems, Xerox Corporation, and the amount is $3,475.19 per month for 48 months. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business? Department reports, committees, boards, remarks, I'm sorry, citizens' request? We actually have three. Mr. Cole?
President Williams, members of the Council, Mayor Guyton, several months ago I came before the Council and requested that you consider appointing millennials to some of the boards. Councilman Worthy appointed a young businessman and there's another individual named that's listed for a possible appointment. So I just ask you again, in your appointment, please consider some of the millennials because we need them to get involved in the service for, of this city and also the political process. Secondly, President Williams and members of the board and also Mayor Guyton, I respect each and every one of you in your positions, because I know sometime public service tends to be a dangerous job. And if I disagree with you on matters, it's not out of disrespect, it's just out of difference of policy. Some people make statements that I come to Gadsden to start trouble or to try to tell you what to do, but I am an advocate for citizens and I'm an activist. And I don't apologize for that, and I won't apologize for that, but I have never come here to try to tell you what to do. I have offered suggestions and ideas and as a council, you have prerogative to accept them or not accept them. But nothing that I have presented is out of the mainstream because some of these things are done in other cities. And I just want to set the record clear on that. Thirdly, I was in a meeting Monday night with some young, millennial, black men and there is an undertone tension between the young, black males and the law enforcement officials. And one of the gentlemen told me that he was stopped by the police with law enforcement officials. And they used a tactic on him that I did not agree with. And I spoke with Chief Jackers and also Commander Johnson of the Task Force. After they stopped him, he got out of the car, they put the cuffs on him. So after speaking to the chief, he and Commander Johnson told me that this process is used for the safety and security of law enforcement officials. And I don't have anything, I don't see anything wrong with that because their safety is the top of all things. We want all our law enforcement officials to be safe. But I did impose upon them to compel their officers to exercise professionalism when they are stopping any of the citizens, because things can get out of hand. And if they're exercising professionalism, then that helps matters. That's why I'm a strong proponent of community policing. When the police go down Tuscaloosa, when they go down East Broad, when they go down Springfield, I believe some things should get out and go and introduce themselves to the business owners to let them know who they are and that they're patrolling the area. Sometimes this can remove tension. And I also told these young men, "When you stop on what they are supposed to do or should do, anytime you're confronted by the police." See, my thing is, if we can deal with these issues, we can talk about them and we can work on them, I don't want anything bad to happen in Gadsden that has happened in other cities. So we jump on the problem beforehand. We don't have to worry about running the church, praying. I believe in prevention of the acute. If you prevent the problem, you don't have to worry about the cure. Thank you so very much for this opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cole.
This is Ann Mitchell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ann Mitchell and my husband Lou and I live at 321 Dogwood Circle. We have lived in Gadsden for 42 years. We have worked here, we have raised our children here, we have sent both of our children to public schools here, and we have said many times, moving to Gadsden was one of the best decisions we have ever made. We love this city. I am here today to share with you the leaders of this city, not only my concerns, but the concerns of many citizens. In the last several months, I have heard people state misinformation, untruths, rumors, innuendos about our school system and have seen division and fear grow. I am here today to ask you, no, to plead with you for your leadership in this matter. This council has done some wonderful things in the past, but today it is now time for you to bring our city together, black, white, rich, poor, everyone together. As we all know, so goes our city school system, so goes this city. And that will be this council's lasting legacy. Dr. Ed Miller, a principal and superintendent in our city schools for the last 25 years, has seen our system through many changes and inherited the big move from three high schools to one. Throughout his tenure, I believe he has tried to be sensitive to all parts of this city and to all of our 5,200 children. Are there improvements that can be made? Certainly. And I think the first person that would say that would be Dr. Miller, because I know him and that is the kind of educator he is. When I was a counselor, a guidance counselor at Gadsden High, Dr. Miller, who was my principal at the time, always was constantly striving for all of us to be better, to think outside the box in how to educate our students and to always strive for excellence. I know that some of you are saying now, "Well, this isn't a council's problem, this is a Board of Education issue." I say that because some of you have already said that to me. I respectfully disagree with you on that for several reasons. Yes, this is a Board of Education matter, but we all know it is much bigger than that. It affects our whole city. Secondly, this council became involved when they did not allow a council person his right to appoint his member to the Board of Education on May the 8th. Finally, this council was elected by the citizens of this city and you, and you alone, are ultimately responsible for its future direction. In conclusion, we are better than this. The City of Gadsden is better than this, or at least I pray we are. This petty fighting regarding this issue just divides us and it erodes trust among us all. Once again, I ask you to provide the necessary leadership, not just for this city, but more importantly, for our children, our future. There is no greater mission for a city than how we prepare and educate our children to succeed in this world. The success of this mission can be your greatest legacy. I believe the citizens of Gadsden stand ready to support you in this work. I have only one more request. I would ask this council to be honest and transparent with the citizens of this great city as to the reason you voted to derail Councilman Worthy's nomination to the school board. I respectfully ask for your response. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
We did not say you can't have this person. All we did, and I voted against it, because I thought we needed to go ahead and put this man on the school board. What we did was put it off for, what, 30 days? And this council will vote that man in, I have all, no doubt, that he will be elected to the school board. I think we got a little bit, I want to be sure that everybody understands that. We did not turn him down. All we did was put it off for 30 days. Is that not so, Ann?
Can I respond?
Sure you can.
Have any of you ever had that happen to any of your appointments?
Oh, it's happened before.
It has?
Oh, yes. But, but this was for some reason that I don't know about, because I was not privy to why they wanted to do that.
That's what I'd like to know.
Well, I can't tell you that because I wasn't part of it.
That's right. You know it, of course.
But I want you to understand that he will be, I don't have any doubt that he will be on the board.
Thank you, Ms. Echols. Mayor? Councilwoman Toles?
I probably won't answer that question, but I'll say, I've worked in the Gadsden City Schools for 26 years. I know the inside and the outside. All we've been concerned is about leadership. What about the children? What about the teachers? What about the administrators? Every emphasis has been put on the leadership. And yes, the leadership starts from the top and it goes down. I just finished working as a teacher at an elementary school, my last day was the 19th. So I know the insides and the outsides of the school system. And yes, I chose to second the motion to table it for 30 days because that was my choice and that was my right to do.
Ms. Echols, do you have anything else? Councilman Worthy?
I appreciate Ms. Mitchell coming and speaking because it's not a black or white issue. It's all about our kids. And I agree with you, so go the school system, so go the City of Gadsden. And what I don't want is that people make this a black and white issue, because from what I understand, you have a lot of white people afraid of what's going to happen and talking about moving their kids out of the school system. Nobody wants that. If they get rid of Dr. Miller, that's the board's prerogative. But the thing about it, let's wait and see who they bring in. If they bring in someone that's well qualified, they do a national search, then you shouldn't worry. But if they go get someone that that group think they can run, then I understand you're moving your kids out of the school system. But we don't, we don't want that to happen. And what I'm afraid of is this might happen and we don't want it to. And what I was doing was making my, because I could have made this appointment last June because that's when the board appointee that was appointed by my predecessors made, her time was up. But I didn't because she was under the impression that she was on to June of 2017. So I let her stay on. But if I'd have known all this was going to take place, I would have took off last But I believe the only person that they turned down for the education table was the one that didn't live in the district, because we was under a gentleman's agreement, long as they lived in the district, you had the right to appoint whoever you want. So I just want everybody to take a deep breath, don't listen to the rumors, let's come together as a community and talk and get the right information before we make hasty decisions. That goes for the community and it goes for us too, because we hear stuff and it may be wrong. And like I said, I don't like to say anything unless I know I'm right. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Billingsley?
Yeah, I'd like to just say that I've worked in the school system also and there's some things that I would like to have seen done differently, but you know, things are what they are. And sometimes things that seem one way are not that way. So we all have to understand, everything is not what it seems sometimes. And I hope we keep a good school system, but you know, I just, and I'm sure that Mr. Worthy's appointee will be elected in 30 days. That's all I have.
Councilman Cannon?
I wasn't going to get in this battle, but I'm going to now, I guess, and I wouldn't put on the spot. Councilman Worthy, can I ask you a question, please?
Yeah, you can ask me a question.
Did you personally come to me and ask me if I would vote for your appointee?
No. I called you and I told people that and you didn't answer the phone.
Okay.
So, uh, so, that's exactly.
Okay. I'm through right there with that point.
Yeah.
You did not ask me to vote for your appointee. You stood up here and slapped this podium and got mad and stormed out of here and you told the public that you asked every person on this council to vote for your appointee.
That's not what I said.
Well, if you'll go back on the count.
I said they should have been mad enough or woman enough to tell me on the phone when I talked to them. You was one of the ones that didn't answer the phone, so I wasn't talking to you.
Okay. You seen me that Tuesday morning? Why didn't you ask me that Tuesday morning?
If I'd have known you was going to vote like you did, I would have.
Well, you didn't. You didn't ask me. It's my vote, like Ms. Toles says.
Yeah, did somebody change your vote? That's, that's the question. Did you not go into somebody's office?
No, I didn't.
And yes, you did.
Okay. Let's find out whose office I went into.
General, let's maintain order. The floor is, the floor is Mr. Cannon's.
The second thing was, it was his responsibility to appoint this person back in June. He's already said that, correct, Mr. Worthy?
Exactly. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
He didn't appoint. So everybody in this room knows that the Board of Education has had trouble since December. If you don't know they had trouble since December, raise your hand. And I think that means everybody here knows they've had trouble. We all need to band together and go to these Board of Education meetings. Half y'all people I sat there, I've never seen at the Board of Education meet that want to go. This is majority of the people that I've seen in the city council meeting in a long time. We all need to get together, band together, and help the city council and the Board of Education and our school system. If we're all in this together, we all need to come together and try to help. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Mine too.
All right. So.
Mine too.
All right, Mayor?
I've been here 11 years and the councils that I've worked with, including this one right here, are all about having the best school we can have. When we got here in '06, we owed $80 million. We had a million and a half in the bank and our payments were seven and a half million a year. It took quite a while to get in financial shape. The school went over budget, about 26 million. We had to go ahead and pay for a lot of things as we could go to get them built that was supposed to be built. Didn't have any problem with that. I've said many times, so goes the school, so goes our city. I know that. Also, you know, we have a $1.2 million payment, they have that, and we've got $20 million in the last 10 years put in that school system and I'm glad we could keep it going. So it, you know, there's never been anybody on the council that I've worked with since I've been here, and this is my, I guess, my third one going on the fourth one. We all have always been on the same page. We have discretionary money and I would say probably the biggest part of our discretionary money goes to teachers in the classrooms, copiers, just things they need. We always give money to everything that they need down there. So you know, it's not like the council and the mayor's office, you know, and somebody even, I've had three people come and tell me that I went in Johnny Cannon's office and tell him not to vote for it. I didn't even talk to Johnny Cannon that day. So you know, I get so sick of, we hear all these rumors and complaints and actually we are all working our butts off to keep everything afloat around here. So, but no, this council has been fine. I've been fine with it. We give them whatever they ask for anytime we can. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
My question is, are you all, you all saying that you're going to vote for him after the 30 days up and going to put him up? What, what's the difference? Why are you waiting 30 days? It was my appointee, you should have voted then for him if he was qualified. 30 days is not going to make a difference. And we do put a lot of money into the school system. We gave him 1.2 million this year in the budget. They get 6,000 and some thousand. We gave him one-point-two million this year in the budget, they get six-hundred-and-some-thousand every year from the ever-lowering tax, we have to give them that, and then on top of that, we pay the bond issue for the school. They pay half and we pay half every year, so that's another, what, a million dollars? Close to it? So we, everybody up here is about the school, and then to give credit to the mayor, this city, I wasn't even here then as a councilman, we built the vocational school, and I was talking to some of you all upstairs. That's why we get so mad, and I'm glad you all explained to me what you did, so I know I won't be saying that anymore. But the kids that want to learn need to be in the vocational school, so you all corrected me, so I'm glad you did. But we're, everybody up here is about education, and I go back to my question, what is the thirty days going to make a difference?
All right, so again, I want to, I want to thank everyone for their comments, you know, Mr. Cole, Ms. Mitchell, thank you for your comments. Again, you've heard me say this before, I always appreciate whether, whether you're on one side of an argument or a discussion or the other, I always appreciate when we have civil discourse, and I think today's meeting demonstrates what can happen when you have civil discourse. You don't have to agree, and in many cases, we won't, but I think it's good when we have civil discourse, we behave like adults, and we don't slap tables, and we don't slap, it was my turn, I think it was my turn, so, but when we, when we don't, when we don't do, when we don't do those kind of things, I'm okay with it, and again, it's fine, it's fine for us to not agree on an issue. As far as the school board goes, I think a lot of good points have been made, we all, we all support the school system. I think we all agree that we want to see a positive outcome with our students when they enter our school system and exit it, and we also know that our school system determines how this community is perceived, so I think we all agree on that regardless as to what side of this issue we're on. Now I think where we disagree is the path forward, and I, and news flash, you know, if we, if we start talking about this issue a year from now, we're probably still going to have some differences of opinion in terms of the path, path forward. I think people have allowed themselves to get very emotional over speculation. I've heard the superintendent's name thrown around a few times. I can assure you that I don't lose any amount of sleep worrying about who, what name is at the head of our school board. What I worry more about is the model, and I talked to a group of folks on last week about that, where I, what I worry more about is the model. If you know me, and I think most people in this room do, I'm probably the least racial person that you're going to run into, so it was a bit concerning for me to have the race issue thrown up. But with our school systems, the issue is poverty, the issue is socioeconomic differences. Those are the, those are the children in our system that are falling out and aren't, and their needs aren't being addressed. And so going forward, whether it's our existing superintendent or whether it's a new one, I honestly believe that that's the need that has to be addressed, the needs of the socio-economically distressed who many of them are working right now, and they can't come to this meeting and advocate for their interest. Many of them are, you know, have very difficult home situations, we have children that are showing, that are showing up, and none of this is the superintendent's fault, it's just kind of what it is, you know, but, you know, I want to highlight a school in Mobile that I visited some time ago. It's, it's Pilans or Pilans Middle School in, in Mobile. Similar situation as to a number of schools in our school district where, you know, it was predominantly, predominantly minority schools, school, and a lot of those kids came from poor households, and the existing administration for years caused that school to be on the, the at-risk schools list or the failing schools list. Well, what they did is they, they made some changes administratively, they brought a new principal in, that they gave that principal some of the latitude to make some changes and, and implement a brand-new model, and the, and the result is that that school continues to be one of the highest-performing schools, not just in the state, but in the nation. And that, and so those are the kind of turnaround scenarios that we have to look at again, whether we have no change at the top or if we have change at the top, we've got to look at our model and determine whether or not it's working. So I would, what I would ask is that we, that we, that we pause, take a step back, and, and not allow ourselves to get hyper-emotional about speculation and things that really haven't happened yet. You know, again, it's okay for people to be dialed in and be active, there's nothing wrong with that, and I don't want to, I don't want to indicate that there is, but, but again, I think, you know, that whether, whether you're on the prevailing side of this issue or not, we all have to remember, and I think it's been said by just about everybody up here, that the kids are the, are what's at the center of our interest, and that's what everybody wants to see, they want to see a good outcome for those young people. So, so again, I thank everybody for being here, regardless as to what side of this issue you're on, because I, I think our education is important. One other thing before we entertain a motion for adjournment, I do want to recognize Deborah Howard, Deb, raise your hand, she's a member of the board and has, has made a point to come out and, and just kind of hear the discourse and, and hear what's going on, and she's very much dialed in, she also works as an educator. So, along with that and the fact that she has a Juris Doctorate, those are all things that, that served in me making her my appointee. So I think she's very well-qualified and, and, and again, I think our board is very capable, and I think they'll make, make the right decision going forward, okay? If there's nothing else, entertain a. Go ahead.
I failed to announce the job fair, the regional job fair that's coming up on June the twenty-seventh from nine AM to one PM at two-ten at the tracks. We're expecting over a hundred and some employers here with, every one of them with jobs, so please pass the word, we're going to do some advertising coming up pretty soon, and you have to go online, go to the Career Center for you to be, to be able to come into the job fair, you have to be registered with the Career Center.
Okay. Did have one more announcement, due to the Memorial Day holiday on May twenty-ninth, next Monday's garbage route will be collected on Tuesday, Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, and there are no changes for Thursday, no changes for Thursday and Friday's route, okay? Ms. Eckles?
There's been a rumor going around that Dr. Tove is going to be the next superintendent, that is not so.
Thank you.
She started to tell you herself, but she's told me that that's not so, and I agree, and I know she's telling me the truth. We've worked together for years because she was the principal over at Donahue for what?
Seventeen.
And so, probably seventeen years we worked together. I gave her money every year, we did a whole thing with her playground, all kinds of things. Anyway, she's not going to be your next superintendent.
Thank you.
All right. I entertain a motion if we adjourn.